Okay, meeting is recording.
Okay, regular selectmen's meeting Monday, April 20th, 2027 p.m., Ashford Town Offices. This is to be held virtually via Zoom. The agenda is as follows: Call a meeting to order. Members present, Catherine and Bill. Hear from the public, I see no public available. The first like, first selectmen's briefing. It's been a trying time, but we're going to get through it one way or the other. It's been very difficult to do our business as normal, but I think we're doing okay. Haven't had a lot of complaints from the public. But I think, I think we're doing all right.
Good.
I see no boards and commissions available. Can we move acceptance of the regular meeting of 4-6-2020?
So moved.
I'll second that, but I, just a brief discussion.
Yes.
On the minutes in item F. Where we had been discussing about the status of the school audit and that.
Yeah.
I know Chuck went to great aims at trying to point out that the second audit that was at the school was not a forensic audit. But that the company that was doing the audit was forensic auditors.
Right.
And I think we ought to change the language in the minutes to reflect that.
That's the company's name and it's not a forensic audit?
Chuck, you know, took the great aims of trying to get us to be clear on that, and I just think the minutes ought to reflect that.
Okay, and we do have the regular audit they didn't come in, so I'll get them to you, they came in today.
Wonderful, I want to see that.
Yep.
All right, so that's an amendment to the minutes to clarify that it's the company.
Right.
I'll make that, yeah.
Do you second Bill's suggestion?
Yes, I do.
All those in favor of Bill's suggestion?
Aye.
Aye.
So passed. So we missed move assessments of the regular minutes of 4-6-2020.
I thought the other ones were 4-6.
What's that?
Last one was 4-6.
Yeah, we just, we just, we just moved on Bill's motion to.
Oh, I see.
Minutes, now we need a motion to accept the minutes.
All right, so I mean, I move to accept them.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Old business. We have none. New business, it's under 7A, I believe you have something, you may have this. It may not be exactly what you have in front of, or what I'm going to read, but it's pretty close. Based on a motion approved by the Board of Finance at their special meeting at 4-16-2020. The Board of Selectmen have been requested to submit for budget consideration. A general government budget that is the same as the 2019-2020 general government budget. Plus an increase of $71,536 for the AVFD for the loss of the ambulance service to Eastford. That is, what's that?
Understood, that's what I have.
Okay.
I have the same thing in front of me.
Okay, can we get a motion to accept that?
So moved.
So moved, I assume Ralph, we're going to have discussions on how we're going to meet that, meet that request?
Well, we've worked very hard today, Bill, and it isn't quite finished, but we know we can meet it. It's going to be difficult, you know, for us for the year to come, but we can meet it, we can meet their criteria.
Can you give us kind of an overview of what we're talking about, Ralph, with cuts?
Well, we, no, I have to go through everything line by line, and I don't have it here in front of me, Bill. We had to increase the salaries by 3%, which were contractually obliged to do. And we had to go through each budget to actually take numbers from that. I have sent some of those budgets back to the individuals that are responsible for them to make sure they agree. We did that upstairs today, and we spent a long time doing it, as soon as I get a hard copy, I'll give it to you.
So the bottom line is that because of the salary increases, the amount that's really going to be taken out of the total budget is going to be pretty much offsetting that, is that correct?
Well, yes.
Except for the $17,000.
That's right, and it came out of each department individually, and it was very difficult to do. We were able to do it, before we print a final hard copy, I want to make sure everybody agrees with me.
Okay, do you have a rough idea when we think we'll see, we'll see that result?
I should get that within the next day or so.
Okay, and then you, and you can forward the information out to us?
Yes, we will.
Excellent. I know it wasn't, I know it wasn't easy.
It was not.
What was the dollar amount, Ralph?
What was it?
You went out on me, I didn't get all the video, but what was the difference between what we approved and the dollar amount, do you know that?
Well, let's see, we had to, what was approved? I'd have to look, Bill, because I have to dig it out.
Okay, well, you can get that to us, I was just curious.
What we did was we had to, the 2019-2020 budget, we had to meet that bottom line, plus the additional money from, from the fire department.
Correct.
The Board of Finance took care of the money for the fire department. What we had to do was put the increase in the salaries in there, and then find places within those individual budgets to take that amount of money from. Which we did, but I want to make sure everybody agrees with us before we actually print the final budget.
Okay. I'm going to assume probably the highway department took the biggest hit?
Well, the highway department took a hit, I did talk to Joe about that somewhat today, we looked at that, and hopefully we can do it. And I've got some other things that we're going to talk about as things go on, it's going to be a very difficult year, there's no doubt about it. But we can meet what the Board of Finance wants to do.
Have you had any, have you had any feedback from the school on what the impact of that cut's going to be, Ralph?
I haven't seen anybody from the school, or haven't heard anybody from the school. I honestly, I honestly don't know, Bill. It was a difficult situation for both of us. First of all, the Board of Finance cut the school, then they gave it back, and now they've cut them again. And they cut them worse than they did the first time, so.
Essentially what they're getting, if I understand correctly, is what the school, well, first of all, let's stick on the thing, stick to the thing we're talking about, I guess. Which is this, for our budget, the Board of Selectmen's.
Yeah, go ahead.
Budget, so we had a motion, do we have a motion on this, to do something with this? Or it's just that we are, we're all clear, and we're going to be getting the information in terms of how things leveled out?
We need a motion, we accept it, because we're not going to have another meeting probably before the hearing. You follow what I'm saying?
Yes, I do, so, so if you have, do you have a total amount, at least? Christine, I see you're on, maybe you might have.
Catherine, you made, Catherine, you made a motion?
No, I have not, I have not made a motion. And Bill seconded.
Accepted, and I seconded, and then asked for comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right, you're correct, thanks.
Yep, let me, let me get to it, one second.
Yeah, I'd prefer that we knew what the. I see that it says the same as the general government budget from 2019-2020. Plus the increase of the $71,536 for the fire department. So Bill, even if, Bill, even if. Bill, even if we don't have the amount, we know what that amount should be, all we have to do is look at our records.
Can I make a friendly amendment to your motion, Catherine?
Sure. He has the amount, that's good.
3,528,605, plus the $71,000 for the fire department.
Thank you.
Give me that again, Ralph, I'm sorry, 500?
3,528,605 was the 2019-2020 adopted budget. And then we add $71,536 to that for the fire department losing Eastford.
Good.
The only other thing that I know about that is happening, in the capital budget, there were two buses for the school. And they decided that they only needed the one bus for this year.
Who decided, the, the Board of Finance?
No, that was the school board, the school board chairman.
Okay.
I was told.
Thank you, all right, so what's the friendly amendment, Bill?
That the Board of Selectmen authorizes the first selectmen to make any appropriate reductions.
Adjustments.
The requirement to the Board of Finance.
Yes, I'd like the word adjustments, instead of reductions, so they can move things around.
You second that, Catherine?
Yeah, I do, but I just like the word adjustments instead of reductions.
Okay. They will be adjustments, is that okay with you, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
And thank you, Bill, that was a good amendment to make.
I appreciate that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so passed. Did you get that, Chris?
No.
Okay. Under new business, we do have an approval of a subordination, a subordination request forwarded by Peter Hawkins. Related to the housing rehabilitation project 12-06.
I haven't received a recommendation from them. They sent in the request for the subordination, but they did not say that they recommended it. So we usually wait when we don't have a recommendation from them.
Okay.
So put it off till the next one.
Is there an impact to waiting, does it impact anything important?
If there was not an, there was not a favorable motion with it, I think we hold off till the next meeting, correct, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what will this affect, bear with me, approval of subordination request.
Was it, was it a foreclosure, Chris?
It's a housing rehab, lean, people are remortgaging, but they're taking money out. And usually when somebody's taking money out, we ask for a recommendation from Peter.
Okay.
Very good, thank you for the clarification.
We have, we find it, we have a tax refund.
It's on your desk.
That?
You have it on your desk, and I sent them the information.
I have it, it's for Molly Ramuson and Robert Pickett Jr., and it's for $10.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve.
I second that.
Citing the statute.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I also would like to. Make, make a notice of the fact that Memorial Day Parade is coming up. And I will, I will send you what I have.
I sent it to them.
Okay, you already have it then, you have it? Memorial Parade Parade 2020?
I do, I got it by email.
Okay, did you get it, Catherine?
I haven't seen it yet, but I'm sure I have it, so with that parade.
It may not happen.
I was wondering what we would do.
Basically, what we're, so we're telling, what we're trying to tell people is that. We're holding off on making a decision until we know what the restrictions are, and we know what we're going to have for participation. We're sure we're not going to have the Eosmith Band, the Choraleers, the Babcock Band. We don't know, we advise people to check the website for the status of the celebration.
That's, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, we will still be doing the flags in the cemeteries.
Okay, good, and I would hope that we would have something that is a. I don't know how to describe this, but there's something that's done at the memorial, a short tribute or something with.
We're going to buy a wreath, you know, we'll get a wreath.
No, I wasn't thinking about the wreath, I was thinking more about having the flags raised as they should be and lowered as they should be.
Oh, there will be, there will be, flags will be done.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need a motion, Ralph, for this document that was forwarded to us? Are we under a timeframe to get that in the citizen or anything? I know we have places for all of us to sign it.
It should go in today.
You're talking about the tax refund, or you're talking about Peter?
I'm talking about the little statement about the parade that Chris had sent us.
No, I don't think we need any.
We don't need a motion.
It's got, it would look good coming from the Board of Selectmen, because they're really in charge of the parade.
Okay, so we can move this forward, if I get a motion to accept it as written. Catherine, second?
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
So passed. We're down to, even though I don't have it on my, yeah, we have remarks. Remarks are the good.
Well, don't you have a major one, I believe it was the resolution for the tax deferment program?
We did that.
We did that?
Yeah, that, that was, yes, we did, didn't we?
No.
Ralph, I don't think so, would you like me to, would you like me to share the screen?
I'm sorry, I will do that, I thought we, I thought we did, made a motion for that effect.
We did motions relating to the budget, but I don't think we took that up.
Okay, then, let's have a motion pursuant to that, and what I can say is that. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Ashford adopts as follows, pursuant to Governor. Executive Order 7S, beginning and including July 1st, 2020. The town of Ashford shall participate in a deferral program, and will offer all eligible taxpayers, businesses, nonprofits. And residents, a deferment of three months for any taxes on real estate. Personal property or motor vehicle taxes from the time such taxes first become due and payable. Item number two, eligible taxpayers shall include, shall not include landlords unless they provide the documentation required by the order. Eligible taxpayers shall not include financial institutions escrowing taxes for residential, commercial, or industrial properties. Item number four, the Board of Selectmen directs the Ashford Tax Collector to proceed with the implementation of this resolution as directed. Adopted by the Board of Selectmen on April 20th, 2020. Get a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second that, could we have a brief discussion?
Brief discussion.
Have you got any input of what impact this may have on, from either the assessor or the tax collector, Ralph?
Yeah, the tax collector is here, I'm sure glad to answer any questions you have, okay?
Sure, hi Linda.
Hi.
Didn't realize you were there.
I'm over in the background, just have questions.
You look like a nurse. Hi Linda.
Hi, it's nice to see you all.
It's great to see you.
We had a go-to meeting, I think, a week and a half ago with.
Linda, could you just talk up a little, I'm having trouble hearing you.
How's this better?
Yes, you look good.
Thank you, we had a go-to meeting, I think, like, almost two weeks ago with Wyndham, Tolland County. OPM, and CTX, and our corporate tax lawyer. And went through many of the permeations, and what it'll mean for Ashford is that. For people who are truly impacted by, you know, this COVID-19. They will have a three-month grace period to pay those taxes. What it means in loss of interest to our town is, I have a number on the other desk, I think it was about 4,900. I'll say $5,000 that will cover it up through October 1st, but it is excluding the escrow accounts. Because we need that revenue coming in, and I ran a numbers on that, and that's worth a couple of 2 million and some dollars. That will come in on time, and people, I think, are still paying their escrow accounts. And if they're having some type of difficulty, they can apply to the town. We're excluding landlords unless they show certain documentation, and most of our landlords are bigger rentals, are escrowed. So they would fall under that. It does not allow accounts that are escrowed. And so, you know, based on our experience with what happened in 2017. When we had our delayed billing in August for real estate and for personal property. Delayed billing for our motor vehicles in December. I think that this gives everybody relief, you know, taxes are taxes, they're not waived. But it gives a longer period to pay up through October 1st with no penalty. And of course, that means if you wait till October 2nd. Then you're going to pay 4.5% interest, it goes back, so we'll advertise it. You know, that there is relief, and we suggest that that's the best program for the town of Ashford.
So let me ask a clarifying point, so if I look at number one. Under the order, under the resolution. That means that anybody in Ashford except for landlords, right?
And escrow.
Yeah, and escrow, can defer their taxes, not pay their taxes until October 1st, should they choose to wait that long, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's the only qualification, okay.
That's the only qualification, and.
Thank you.
Those people, I have found under that, what we did in 2017, people are trained to pay their taxes when they pay their taxes.
Yes.
Whether we defer them or not, many people have planned for it, and if they have the ability, they want them off of the grid, they want them done. And they'll do it according to the schedule.
Very good.
If they can't, that's a different, you know, then they have some grace period.
Very good, and that gives you enough time in terms of tax bills, how will that work?
That means that we have to have a budget in place, and the bills have to be due by July 1. If they're not, there is no deferment, it goes away.
At what point in time does that budget have to be in place for you to make the date of July 1?
Well, we like it by June 2nd or 3rd to get everything rolling in motion, because we have to do our exemptions, we have to do the calculus. And we have to get it to our software company. And yes, and this, this deferral has to be reported to OPM no later than April 25th. So Ralph has, has the order, and each town, all 169 towns and the quasi-towns and the special taxing districts. They have to comply and register with OPM by April 25th. That's part of the executive order.
Very good, and the state does not require that people who are deferring their taxes provide any reporting that they're going to be deferring their taxes until that later date, correct? There's nothing they have to do, other than.
They have to do nothing, and each town has leeway on how they're adopting the deferral program if they so choose that, or low interest. And the concurrence with the rest of the state municipalities is that. The resolution written for low interest is so hard to interpret that they suggested that nobody adapt that.
Very good, I'm glad we have you at the helm on that, thank you.
Linda, quick question, you're not deferred by any of your obligations to meet timeframes to get the billings out and all of that?
Meaning the, that it still has.
You're still obliged to send the tax bills out on your, on your original timeline?
Yes, yes, because if we don't get that budget and billing done, it goes away. It has to be for the regular statutory requirements due on July 1.
Understood, and I also am happy you're at the helm.
Thank you.
You two understood that fully?
Very well.
Yes, I'll move the motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. I believe we're down to remarks.
I have a couple, I do have a couple of things.
Yep.
On the parking lot outside of Nolton, is there any chance that we can get a sign up there that says that it's for municipal use only? We have big tankers pulling in there, I mean, the liability of a spill would be a big deal, but we also have some other things going on as well. We have people making masks in town for people, and they're picking them up there, another thing. Another thing we have going on is food pickup there as well. So I was thinking it's just kind of a, not a good situation, it's never been a good situation.
Well, the fact that Planning and Zoning approved that, and then they, then there was asked to put a sign in front of Cumberland Farms that they couldn't park there. So now they're parking in front of it in the town hall.
Planning and Zoning, excuse me, I'm just looking over here at my husband, I'll be talking to him later, Planning and Zoning approved that, oh my.
Well, I mean, they can't, I mean, they approve, is what it is, and there's no place to park. Planning and zoning was never.
Well, okay, clarification, Planning and Zoning did not.
Planning and zoning was never approached about, yes or no about parking over there? I wasn't, wasn't talking about parking there, there's very little parking within the lot for the number of vehicles that are going to be there.
Oh, you're talking about Cumberland.
That's right. Oh.
So, okay, so we also have, you know, when school starts up again, we'll have a school bus pulling in there as well. Again, I've heard it from a few people about it, and that's why I thought I would bring it up, so that's something to think about.
And there was a sign now put up in front of Cumberland's because of the fact that they can't park there over there at Short Hill. So now they're parking down in front of the parking lot. You follow what I'm saying?
Are they parking in the parking lot, that's what I heard, in the parking lot.
It's possible, they've always parked dump trucks in there, I know that, I've seen that regularly, tractor trailers normally park in front of the town hall.
Okay. So, all right, all right, so I.
I can't see how we can stop it, but you know, we'll look at it, we'll talk in the next Board of Selectmen meeting.
Thank you, sir, the other thing was, does our custodial contract have anything about them trying to find savings for us? Just out of curiosity.
Who's custodial contract?
We have a custodial contract, correct? Okay, I didn't know if part of that contract might be something where they're looking for savings for us over time. I just, it was just a question, and maybe it's.
In what manner?
Take offline.
In what manner, we direct them what to do, what are we talking about?
Well, sometimes you can have a contract where it's for services, but part of what they're, they're supposed to be, also be doing is looking for ways that we can save costs.
They do, they buy cheap paper towels and cheap toilet paper.
And they've been supplying it since day one, right? They've been supplying it since day one.
Yeah, all right, oh, and cheap hand soap.
I see, okay, and the only other thing was, what did, did we hear anything back? You know, probably not, with the school's budget, they had something where they were trying to set up some kind of mental health group within the school for families. And I wondered if that was something they were still pursuing, but I don't know that this is the group I should ask that question of.
I don't think that question is germane tonight because, because of what they're being cut.
Understood, understood, I just had it on my list, thank you.
Any other remarks?
Yeah, I got a couple of quick questions, how does all of this relate to the timing that on the Region 19 budget?
Oh, good point.
I believe they passed their budget last night, didn't they not?
I don't know, I didn't check.
One of the, one of the big problems with our budget this year was the fact that we're in the hole this year for number of students, that was the big problem.
We're in the barrel, yeah.
I believe they met last night, I don't have it here in front of me.
When you say they, you mean the Region 19?
Yes, Region 19.
Clearly, they haven't gone to referendum, are they supposed to go to referendum as well?
No, they are not supposed to go to referendum, they can, they can, they can do it by themselves.
This year?
This year, just this year.
Well, if you could just check on that, I'd be curious if they passed it, or.
I'll check on it.
When that's going to be done.
Linda said it's been done.
It's in the Board of Finance minutes.
In the Board of Finance. In the Board of Finance minutes, which I haven't gotten yet.
Oh, that it would have been last week?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know why I thought it was this week.
And I didn't make, I, I didn't, I thought that it was a meeting on the 14th of the Board of Finance, and I had another commitment that I couldn't get out of. But was there any discussion, Ralph, about the, the availability for the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to the audit re, the, the second audit report that was done up at the school?
Are you talking about the regular audit report?
Well, we discussed at our last meeting to make sure that our board got copies of both of them. My question was about the second one, but it also applies to the main audit.
Okay, we have copies of the second audit.
Oh, you do?
We do have, and I told you I'd get those to you, you know, I'll put those in your box, or I'll get them to you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
When you say this, when you're saying the second audit, you're saying the audit that was done by the regular auditors, not by forensic audit company? And we want a copy of the one done, done by forensic audit, audit company as well.
I quickly went through the Board of Finance minutes, and there was no reference to the forensic audit.
I, I had looked at them as well, I didn't see it either, so I didn't know if they were done.
We actually made a motion at our last Selectmen's meeting that we wanted that brought up with the Board of Ed, and we wanted copies of them. And we had a discussion about FOI and several other things at that meeting, but I'd still like to have copies of both of those reports.
Yeah, we have the one, we have not seen the other one.
Do you, do you have an idea if the other one is done?
I, I believe that one goes directly to the Board of Education, not the town.
But it's, but it is freedom of information, we should be able to get it.
Yes, we could, we can have access to it, but I, I have not seen it.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna watch the, I'll watch the Board of Ed minutes.
I haven't seen anybody, you know, at the school since, since our last meeting, it's just been closed.
Well, I know we're all, you know, we're all acting under sort of emergency conditions, but I just want the record to be clear, we expect to get copies of both of those reports submitted to you.
Yes, like I said, I have the one, I believe we will have to ask the Board of Education for the other one.
Okay.
Because I think it goes, I think it goes to the Board of Education, it doesn't come to us.
Got you. I'm all set, thank you very much.
Okay, can I get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I, I would like to comment that, you know, this is very difficult, that we do this and deal like this. It, it's different, and I appreciate the help we're getting from John.
Yes, John.
But I, I'd rather get back to normal business.
I don't know, this is not, this is not as bad as it could be. I'm glad that we're able to see each other, this could have ended up being phone conversations, which would have been horrible, and it's great to be able to see the documents, John, thank you for putting that one up. And to be able to see everybody and have people available to answer questions, so that worked out fine.
Okay, thank you, Catherine, Bill, Chris, and you too, John.
Thank you, folks, thanks, Chris.
Stay well, everybody.
You too, good night.
Stay safe.
Yes.